All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here for our council meeting. We'll go ahead and call the council meeting to order. Mary Jo, can you call the roll, please?
Erin Barowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Grodick.
Here.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Here.
Madeline Shaki.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Christians around the world this week, this is a week of sorrow, remembrances and celebration as we once again reflect on the life, death, and resurrection of Jesus Christ on this earth. Easter, Holy Week, and Resurrection Sunday are celebrated around America and around the world in order to cause each of us to reflect on the gift of Christ to our world. As we go through our days this week, as Christians, please take some time to reflect on Christ's sacrifice, to remember the hope that it brings, to share His love with those around us, and to celebrate His resurrection. To all of Brooklyn, may Holy Week and Resurrection Sunday bring renewed joy, hope, and peace to your lives. Please join me in prayer. Father, we thank you for this chance that we have together once again as a city council, administration, and residents of this city to discuss the matters that are before us. We thank you for this place that we're able to call home and for the wonderful blessings that it brings. Lord, we thank you for this week that is often referred to as Holy Week as we remember the cross and to celebrate your resurrection, or I pray for the hope and joy that it will bring to many lives. Lord, please bless our meeting tonight. I hope what we do here to bring honor and glory to you, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. The first item we have on our agenda this evening is our approval of minutes from our last meeting dated March 28th. Does anyone in council have any comments or questions?
May I be recognized?
Yes.
On page two, under my report, I think it's the one, two, I think it's the fourth line, just to clarify that what I said was that regionalization was not the primary purpose that we purchased a ladder truck and built a fire station. So if we could make that correction, I'd appreciate it.
Anything else? Move to approve as amended.
Circle.
To approve the minutes as amended. Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes.
Madeline Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience is in to say for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn, please stand forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. So please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Hello, my name is Don McMahon. I reside at 9515 Memphis Avenue. I'm here to ask the mayor if Don Neal is still a current employee in the city and how our life coach counseling is coming along. I would also like to know why you fired Nikki Blunk, all because the fact that she didn't have any nice choice words regarding to Don Neal. In fact, Nikki didn't know Don Neal until she became a coworker. For Nikki, she was not happy with the way Don Neal treated residents of this town, and according to her, you, Katie, were yelling at her so bad she walked out of her conversation for fear of being struck. I'm wondering if maybe you, mayor, should be joining Don in life coach counseling since you seem to have an anger issue yourself. Were you aware that your conversation with Nikki was recorded? I would like all of you to know that I'm not going away, and I have a lot of information to bring to the next council meeting, of which all the info I have constructed by you, mayor. The people of this town need to know how you're wasting their hard-earned money. The good people of this town are afraid to speak up to you in fear of retribution from the building department. But trust me, I'm not one of those people. Like I said, I'm not going away. I will see you at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Kelly Crawl, 10523 Manoa Avenue. I just wanted to let council know and whoever's watching that the Brooklyn Boosters, Music Boosters, and PTA are having a free Mother's Day event on May 1st from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Acres Admin Building. And there's more information floating around Facebook, and I also have information after the meeting if you're interested. It's for all mothers, you don't have to, not like school mothers, any mother in Brooklyn, just to kind of do like a meet and greet and get people more involved in our school events. Thank you.
Rob Slattery, 6600, Busom Drive. You're speaking tonight as a private citizen. Every time I get up and talk, there's always referencing me being a school board member. I haven't given up my voice as a citizen just because I got elected to school board. This has nothing to do with it. The emergency sergeant for the city has been broken for several years now, and we've contacted the city and asked, and the answer's always been given that there's a program called Ready Notify. Now, I asked for all the stats from the city about how many residents were signed up. The response I got was 1,477. From the 2020 census, there was 11,359 residents in the city of Brooklyn. That means 13% of the city has signed up for that program. If there's a power outage, if people's phones aren't charged up, I think that poses a safety issue. With all the money that's being spent with the city, with the new city project, the city spent $40,000 on a new city logo, $12,000 for a city newsletter, $12,500 from a community survey, and I believe this is the second, possibly third, survey that's gone out in the last couple of years, $6,600 on a life coach, $6620 on windows and a door for the service director's office, $6,000 for the furniture in that office, well over $300,000 for fixtures, furniture, and equipment for the new city, new city hall, and police station, and the money that we've spent with regional dispatch. It started out $2,016 to $212,000 a year. Last year, 2021, $643,941 we spent. I think that this is ridiculous to get cheap with an item that could benefit every resident of this city when there's, I'm not saying there's no concern, but we're spending money like drunken sailors here, and then all of a sudden you're going to cut it short and go cheap on that. I think it's ridiculous, and if something happens, it's going to be at your feet.
Anyone else like to speak for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn? We'll move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin this evening, we're going to mix up a little bit, we'll begin with our recreation board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. This year's Memorial Day Parade will be held on Monday, May 30th. Parade kicks off at 11:00 a.m. at the Brooklyn Board of Education with the ceremony at the City Hall. Please join us in honoring all the men and women who served in our country. If anyone is interested in participating in the parade, please register www.brooklynrec.com or call 216-635-4283. The next recreation board meeting will be held on April 18th in the Rec Center Meeting Room at 7:00 p.m. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The Domestic Abuse Commission, Councilwoman Ratchuck.
Wear Blue is a statewide awareness campaign that takes place on the second Wednesday of every April, which is also recognized as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Ohioans are encouraged to wear blue this Wednesday to show your support for preventing child abuse neglect. That ends my report.
Thank you. Legislative update, Councilwoman Barowski.
Thank you. My legislative updates about Senate Bill 1. In November of last year, Governor Mike DeWine signed into law Senate Bill 1, which took effect this past January, that students who entered the ninth grade are to be required to complete a course in basic financial skills. The goal is that these students are better prepared for adulthood. The new law would require that Ohio high school students receive one-half unit of instruction or a total of 60 hours from a teacher that has been properly trained in financial literacy. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The committee, the whole, met at 6:15 this evening, as we do prior to all regularly scheduled council meetings, to discuss the following. The meeting was started off, we had some guests here from university hospitals. They are looking to recoup part of about $11 million that they, additional funding they had to spend during the COVID time, and so they are asking the area communities that partner for UH Parma to chip in a portion of the ARPA money that we received this last year, or over, I guess, the last year and a half or so. It's 0.87% of what we would receive, that equates to about $11,000. And so they were here to kind of explain what that funding would go towards and kind of give us a little bit of an update of what's going on at that hospital. So we had got to ask them quite a few questions. Additionally, we had a brief discussion on their redoing the boards, as far as the boards that oversee those hospitals. As those of you that have been around for a while know, that Brooklyn has an actual member on that UH Parma Hospital Board as it currently stands, and they're doing some restructuring of those boards. It looks like we're going to lose that representative off of that board as the Brooklyn Parma Hospital will, the Parma UH Hospital will be lumped in with some other regional hospitals. It'll be like a regional board. And so that is unfortunate, but that is the case that's going to happen. It hasn't happened yet, but that's looking to happen. And so council will be considering whether or not to distribute those funds to UH to help them offset those losses from the COVID time over the last year and a half or two years. For our agenda this evening, we discussed the Cuyahoga County Urban Tree Canopy Grant that we were awarded, $29,403.90, and that grant will be used to plant some new trees this year as well, to develop a five-year plan for taking care of the trees that we currently have. We currently don't really have a system laid out for that, so Mr. Verba talked a little about the fact that we're going to be putting together a plan for that. Of course, we have a lot of trees in this city, and so they need to be taken care of, so we're going to use some of those funds to lay down a plan to do that. A resolution 2022-10 is on second reading. This allows the county to operate a public utility in our city pursuant to their powers under the state of Ohio. We had a discussion regarding that, and that is on second reading this evening. Up for the third ring in adoption is the purchase of one parcel of land for $1 at 43221038. This is on Road on Road to the West Creek Conservancy. Currently, it sits in the city of Brooklyn Land Bank property. It's essentially useless property for building. The creek runs right through the middle of it, it's cliffs on both sides, and they will be adding this to their land bank for conservancy purposes if it does go through this evening. Next is our ordinance 2022-8. This is adopting a moral claims, adding it to our code, and this will be for a range from $1,000 up to $1,000 to $5,000 in case there is some sort of accident that takes place with our safety forces currently. It would still be the case, all safety forces are immune to any type of accidents while responding in that, and of course, we have people that are involved sometimes in accidents from that. So this would allow moral claims up to $1,000 will be handled by the administration internally, and then anything between $1,000 and $5,000 would go to a three-person board, or a three-person committee, I should say, to be made up at a later time to pay off those claims. It's basically to help people pay for their insurance deductible if they were involved in that, and then this ordinance also requires council to be notified of any such claims. On second reading this evening is ordinance 2022-9. This establishes the One Ohio Opioid Litigation Settlement Fund, and these are funds that Brooklyn will be receiving as a result of a settlement from litigation in regard to opium. Mr. Butler was asked when we would receive those funds, and we really do not know, until the litigation is finalized. On our new business this evening, resolution 2022-13, adopting the Cuyahoga County Greenways Vision Plan, and providing for the review of that, and this involves Cuyahoga as county for the different greenways in our city, and we'll be having further discussion of this in our next committee, the whole meeting. We really didn't have a lot of time to discuss this today. And that goes for resolution 2022-14 as well, and this is the Greater Cleveland and Trail Bike Ways Wayfinding Sign System. Again, did not have a lot of time to discuss this. We'll discuss it in our next committee, the whole meeting. Resolution 2022-15, this is our contract with the city of Cleveland for our disposal of waste at the Ridge Road Transfer Station. The renewal contract is due, and it will be at $46.13 per ton. Currently, we're paying a little over $43, so there is a price increase there. We had a discussion on ordinance 2022-11, and this is the reaffirming the prohibition of possession, discharge, or ignition of fireworks in the city of Brooklyn. As many of you may recall, last year, late last year, the state of Ohio legalized fireworks in the city of Brooklyn, or excuse me, in the state on certain days, and this ordinance, if adopted, would reaffirm the city's ban on those fireworks. And so I'm going to make a motion when we get to it tonight to transfer this ordinance to the Public Safety and Environmental Committee so we can have further discussion on this ordinance. And then the last two items, ordinance 2022-12. These are just some housekeeping items for updating the ordinances in the city of Brooklyn. And then lastly is ordinance 2022-13. This is updating our capital improvement plan for 2022, and this is for an increase of $185,000, and this is for a purchase of a new salt truck for the service garage. This was slated to go on next year's capital funding, but because it takes so long to build the truck now, we decided to go ahead and purchase the vehicle this year in hopes that we will get it in time to be put in service at the normal time. And so that's an increase of $185,000. All right, the committee, the whole, does meet at 6:15 prior to the start of all regularly scheduled council meetings. All are welcome to attend. We'll now move on with our planning commission, Councilwoman Grodick.
Thank you. We met on Wednesday, April 6th, and the planning commission approved a request from WD Partners for preliminary site plan approval for 8,300 square foot expansion for Walmart at 10000 Brook Park Road, and that will be primarily for their online orders. And the second request that was approved was from Zeisler Morgan Properties for a preliminary site plan approval for a drive-through expansion for Dunkin' Donuts at 4740 Ridge Road. As many residents know who drive through that area or go to Dunkin' Donuts, the drive-through check is rather small, so they have been exploring ways to expand it. And the plans they presented to us would expand the check area from six cars to 11 cars. So they seem to think that would definitely help the traffic on Ridge Road. The next meeting will be May 4th at 6:00 p.m., and that ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Grodick. Next up is our school board liaison, Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. The school board had a work session on Tuesday, April 5th. I wasn't able to attend, however, I did get an update. Basically, there was an overview of the levees, which I have reported on several times. They have not yet made a decision on whether or not to combine the next two upcoming renewals. The renewals will be on the ballot. There's just not a decision yet on whether they will go on as individual renewals or combined. The Hurricane Town Hall meeting was the next day, April 6th, at 6:00 p.m., and I was able to attend that. It was very informative, and I'd like to thank Dr. Claris for the presentation. There was a lot discussed, so I'm just going to try and do a brief overview. There was an overview of the strategic plan, the pillars and priorities. He touched on the development of a portrait of a hurricane and the attributes they aspire for all of our graduates, not just test scores, preschool all the way through their graduation. And he also mentioned that they also expect that the adults in the school system also need to model these characteristics. There is signage and branding throughout the building to emphasize this. Last year, they transitioned to block scheduling in the high school. They established a digital academy, and some of the students who attend the digital academy, some might work at a job in the afternoon, or some do go to Polaris. They touched on Project Lead the Way, which is a STEM program for engineering, technology, and computer science. He talked about the gifted program, and instead of the AP students self-teaching their summer work, that in the beginning of the summer, providing guidance to prep them for their summer work. Mentioned summer camp, and also complimented Mr. Abruzzi, who's doing an outstanding job. There are already 45 students enrolled who, because they qualify, will be paid through federal funding. There will be a new pavilion outside the Home Concession Stand, which will be a big benefit for all the volunteer groups who support the schools like Music Boosters and Athletic Boosters. At the May 17th meeting, there will be an in-depth discussion of the current five-year forecast, and I had two questions at the end that I'll just share with residents. The first was, some of these programs, services, and some of the additional staff, they've been paid for with pandemic funds, and one of my questions was, will the schools be positioned where they will be able to fund these after the federal grants are exhausted? And Dr. Claris did answer yes. They recognize that making meaningful changes does take time, and they are committed to all these improvements. My second question was about residents having access to the track on evenings and weekends. I know I still get calls from residents on this, and I just wanted to make sure that it didn't fall through the cracks. I did mention some of the ideas that were presented in the past. One of them was if residents could use their rec swipe card over there, if they could put in a swipe system. And then I know in the past, we also talked about trying to get an agreement to let our rec department employees lock up the track before we close, because we do have staff at the rec center who are here evenings and weekends. I do know that the challenge with that is a union issue. Dr. Claris did promise that he would continue to work to find a solution. That completes my, oh, the next meeting is April 26, 6 o'clock, in room 173, and that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Third Housing Committee, Councilwoman Ratchuck.
Thank you. Every April, the nation celebrates April as Fair Housing Awareness Month, as it's the anniversary of the passing of the Fair Housing Act of 1968. Just last month, Ohio's own Marsha Fudge became the first sitting U.S. Secretary of Housing and Urban Development to declare housing as a human right. Barriers to safe and affordable housing still exist today, including discrimination, which can lead to homelessness. Tomorrow, the Fair Housing Center for Rights and Research will be hosting a fair housing law overview for landlords from 6:00 to 8:00 at the South Euclid Branch Library, which members of the Brooklyn Fair Housing Commission were informed about and encouraged to attend. That completes my report.
Thank you. The next ordinance zoning appeals meeting will take place on April 21st at 6:00 p.m. to hear one request, a request from Evan DiMaggio for a variance on additional 21 inches, the allowed height of 26 inches for a fence installed parallel to a residential structure at 4120 Parkside Drive. That takes place right here in council chambers. We'll now move on with reports of council, begin this evening with Mr. Barowski.
Thank you. Me and Ms. Pucci, we spoke yesterday about the opioid litigation settlement fund, and I completely support her on the idea of some kind of committee, be it, you know, with the chiefs, be it a member of city council and so forth, a resident that's been personally affected through the opioid crisis. I think that's a good way to address the situation. And also on other things, the moral clause legislation, you know, I think it shows good face value that, you know, the city is recognizing accidents happen, and where we're legally able to, we want to help out, and I think that the city got it right with this, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. Good evening. And a couple of issues, one of them over to Chief Melkey. I did talk to Councilwoman Brodick on this Dunkin' Donuts. Chief, in your eyes, on this so-called plan Dunkin' Donuts has adopted or going to put through, will these cars be pulled off of Ridge Road and will that traffic flow freely with this new plan?
It'll get better. Can't guarantee it's not going to flow on Ridge Road. Simple as that.
And if it doesn't get better, can we go back to him and somehow get those cars into Ridge Park Square and get them off Ridge Road?
I know we've, I brought that very topic up about it not possibly solving the problem, and they were open to taking a look and see if, you know, if there's other ways they can route traffic if it doesn't solve that problem. So yeah, they've been very cooperative and open to trying to get this taken care of, so.
Because the problem's just going to increase, because eventually, when they rip up Ridge Road, repave, we're not only going to have that problem, but the problem in blocking the lane off. So it's just going to increase. Now they're ripping up Pearl all the way down on the other side, and that traffic's being rerouted on Ridge, because I know there's traffic that's coming up on Ridge Road. So one way or the other, they're going to head south. And Pearl's all backed up now, so they're going to come to Ridge.
Not when they tear up Ridge, eh?
Hopefully Pearl will be done, then it's going back to Pearl. The second thing, and Mr. Slattery brought this up, this siren, how long has that siren been down?
I couldn't tell you. It's probably 10 years since I've been chief.
How much will it cost to get that thing rolling again?
A conservative estimate was $35,000 to $40,000, and it's probably going to have to do new sirens. Those sirens gave us a lot of trouble over the years that we did have, they were up and down.
Mayor, since their program, if those numbers hold true, and Mr. Slattery said about 1,000 people are on that program, and we have 11,000 here, if those numbers hold true, and there's other people that are so-called going to be a problem or emergency or whatever it may be, we might want to look at that siren and get it up and running, in my opinion. I don't know how many cities, I wish I knew how many cities are using them, I didn't look into it, but it might be somewhere we need to go and look at. If, in fact, those numbers hold true, that he's saying there's only 1,000 people on that program. Second thing, and Mr. Hennings brought up about the fireworks. Here's my take on the fireworks. If it was my wife's way, they'd be going all together, because she's for the safety issue. My problem that I have is them going all night long. I'm giving up 3:30 in the morning, and they're still letting them off. I'm leaving at 4:30, and they're still going up in the air. Class C, as I believe, is what they're supposed to be blowing off, but it's now headed into Class B, and if they can't find, they're going to wrap them together and blow them off. For instance, 4H100s is close to a stick. 6H100s. One way, they're going to wrap it to a rocket launcher, and it's going up. Problem that I have is, not so much that I'm against fireworks, is to limit, like you were talking about, the hours, and how they're being blown off, and how long do people have to go to work, and what have you, and I've gotten a lot of calls in the last fourth, how long is this going to go on all night long? So I'm not against the fireworks, it's the hours of operation and the amount of power being used.
We can talk about that.
Right. I've just given you my issues that I've had, that's all. 2022-10, I'm 100% for those micro grids. I believe that's an attraction for companies. We could take sides against this, for this. Power has gone out, and I know how it is, people that have some pumps without the power going out, they don't have a backup generator or battery. You have flooded basins. So I can imagine when power goes out in some of these companies, when they're going to shut down the whole operation. So again, power going off in one city, and our city stays lit, or those companies stay lit, makes a big difference. I do believe it makes a big difference. And I believe the mayor brought this up, there are going to be cities, and I believe Euclid was one of them, are going to put these grids in. And eventually, I would imagine, they're trying to get it in other cities. I would like to wish all Brooklyn residents and their families a very happy Easter this Sunday. With the warmer weather coming, now is the time to get outside and enjoy one of the many walking trails Brooklyn has to offer, or just relax in one of the parks throughout our city. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Grodick.
Thank you. First, I would like to wish families Ramadan Mubarak. If you are a Muslim family in our community, I know that you are celebrating Ramadan this month, along with our many other celebrations. I'd also like to wish a happy Easter and Holy Week to the Christian families in our community who are celebrating those holidays. And along with a lot of things that we're trying to remember in April, it is also Autism Acceptance Month, and many of us have been touched, I know any of us that are around school and children, have been touched by autism. Autism affects one in every 54 children in our country, and many of you know autism is a very complex developmental condition that looks differently depending on the person or the child, but it often has an effect on a person's ability to interact, communicate, and progress in a more typical manner. So April is a great month to be aware of the many different persons. month to be aware of the many different personalities and characters that make up our community in Brooklyn. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Ratchuck.
Thank you. April means springtime, even though it doesn't always feel like it, which means we're back to our community cleanups for the summer months. We will be starting our cleanups with the Big Creeks Connect, which is the big partnership cleanup that happens every April. Saturday, April 30th, at 9:00, the Brooklyn location will be meeting behind the fire station again. Additionally, we with Keep Brooklyn Beautiful, look forward to working with Mrs. McGary's class for cleanups later this month. We did one back in November, and we'll be meeting up with her class again in April and May. And then I just wanted to mention, because going off of, you know, April's a big month with recognitions, and Councilman Borowski brought up the Financial Literacy Bill that the state passed, and April is Financial Literacy Month. And this is really important, because financial abuse occurs in 99% of domestic abuse cases. And it's often cited by survivors of domestic violence that the main reason they stayed or returned to a partner is because of finances. So I know I read this before, and after he brought up that it is in the state law that we have to teach our kids. It's so important to understand personal finances. And while it won't solve domestic abuse or helping partners leave abusive situations, it's the first step is really education to prevention. So I just wanted to mention that as well. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Selhards.
Thank you. A quick reminder to the residents on Summer in Kennedy Lane, those that you have adjoining backyards. Councilman Borowski and I went out a couple of weeks ago, dropped off surveys. You have till April 30. Please fill them out and get them back to us. You can do it online. You can call in. We'll go out and pick them up. We've had a handful come in. We actually need to get the results from everybody to try to get a unanimous decision on this, one way or another. Try to get resolved once and for all. Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce, this past Friday, some sad news. Taste of Brooklyn, that was scheduled for April 30, Saturday evening from 7:00 to 10:00, was canceled due to a lack of people signing up for it. Also, the big problem was number of restaurants participating. There were a handful that participated, but not enough to support the anticipated crowd that usually goes there. A lot of the reasons were just COVID, post-COVID, short-staffed, don't have enough people to be at the restaurant, to be on location out at the party center, rising food prices. So Taste of Brooklyn for this year has been canceled. There will be the grocery giveaway sweepstakes that they were working on. That's gonna be used to supplement the scholarship fund. Details on all the nuances of the sweepstakes will be coming out. As Mick mentioned, volunteer, Keep Brooklyn Beautiful, if you want to look at the dates, the dates for the year are up in the system. You can look and find them at volunteer.kab.org. When you put in a radius of five miles, you'll see all the Brooklyn locations, dates that we have, or at least the dates that we have. We've actually started a couple of them already. And just hoping, hoping and wishing everybody a safe and joyous Easter, Christian holiday, and all the other holidays for all the other residents, not to exclude anybody. And that concludes my report.
Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. I just want to double check, because we really didn't have time to talk about the Parma Hospital issue. Are we gonna discuss that at the next committee of the whole? Okay, thank you. Just to add a little bit to what Mr. Borowski brought up about the financial literacy, this is a little coincidental, but actually, Thursday, April 21st, the Federal Reserve Bank of Cleveland for their April Fed Talk, it's the ABC's 123s and Financial Literacy, Why Teaching Finances to Youth is Important. Usually their talks are pretty good. And I did pass this along to Dr. Claris in case anyone from the schools were interested, because basically, they're gonna have an introduction, and then they're gonna hear from someone who had to implement it in the state of Kentucky, who was a little bit ahead of Ohio on this. And then they have a panel of leaders in financial literacy education, and they will then have a broader conversation about the new Ohio law and how educators can access the necessary resources to help their students thrive. So I did pass that along to Dr. Claris, and hopefully someone from the schools will be able to participate in that. And regarding the whole fireworks, unfortunately, we just didn't have time to discuss it. So I do have some questions for our chiefs and for our law directors. So I look forward to the Safety Committee meeting, where we can have a more in-depth discussion on that. On the Ready Notify system with the county, you know, the advantage to us with going with the county is it was a service that they provided for free to us. Before that, we were paying for it as a city. And I know when we initially went with the Ready Notify, they were actually using a different provider. And then we were thankful that they did then go with Code Red, who is, that's the company the city was using. But we are not able to use this really effectively. And I know pre-pandemic, when I brought it up in the past, you know, other cities really use this as a tool to communicate with residents. And when I had brought it up, I was told that we don't have enough people participating. One of the ideas I proposed before the pandemic was that, you know, we really make a bigger push and be a little bit more hands-on. For example, like bringing a laptop and a mobile hotspot to city events, where we can, you know, get residents to sign up, you know, where we have kind of captive audience, maybe, you know, passing out the little cards that the county provides on it. And I just think there's not a lot of residents who are aware of it and who are, who would then recognize that it is a very important tool that a lot of other cities are using to communicate. So I would hope that we'd be able, now that we're coming out of the pandemic, and we're gonna be having more events where we have larger groups of residents, that we'd be able to really make a push for that. I would support looking at the siren. I know there are still some cities who have it, especially in light of the fact that, you know, we don't really have an automated way of connecting with our residents. When we had Code Red, it was an opt-out, which meant that everybody was in it unless you opted out. Now, that's a little more challenging nowadays, because there's so many people who don't have landlines anymore, and it can be difficult to get cell phones. But I do think it's important to have a way of warning our residents when something is happening. So I don't know if we can get like a current estimate, or if it's possible. Let's see. And I think that's it. Happy Easter to our residents, and also Happy Ramadan, which I think started last week, it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Just briefly, in regards to ordinance 22-10, this is the allowing the county to operate a public utility in the form of microgrids here in the city. We discussed this issue really at length in the committee of the whole meeting. Director Foley was here from the county to answer our questions. I'm against this legislation, and I will be voting no on it when we vote on the next meeting. There's a lot of reasons why. I'll just share a few of them. First of all, to address a couple of things, you know, Mr. Tansky gave the illustration of a sump pump in someone's house not working. This is not for residents. This is for businesses only. So that would not address that. Additionally, the comment was made that this is gonna happen regardless of whether Brooklyn gets involved in it or not, and that is true. But that really doesn't have any bearing on whether I support it or not. I don't really look at it that way. I look at it as this good for our city. And, you know, so basically what this microgrid is, it's an electric grid that would operate attached to the current power grid, and it's designed to be used for renewable energy. That's the, that's the main push behind this, is to get the use of renewable energy. Mr. Foley is very, very big into that. He was when he was down at the state Capitol. He's, and he is, continues to be there now in the county. I'm not against that. It's just that the bottom line is, is that we're not there yet. I looked up today on the U.S. Energy Information Administration website, the city, the state of Ohio currently, only 3% of our energy is generated by renewable energy, which means 97% of it is not. Mr. Foley made the comment that he estimates that 40% of the grid would be powered by renewable energy. I think that's a very high aim, especially if only 3% of the state is using it, which means that 60% of the grid is gonna be provided by the current grid that we already have for CEI. So this grid, new grid that would be in competition with CEI, would have to purchase over half their power from that main competition, meaning that more than half the grid would simply be a middleman. So just basic economics states that this will cause prices to be higher, not lower, and efficiency to be less, not more. Secondly, it's widely agreed that first, energy successfully delivers about 99%, 99.9% of power to its customers. Mr. Foley stated the number of 99.3, so we'll use that. The county is building this new microgrid to improve reliability by 0.6%, as the county claims their grid would be 99.9% successful, since you can't guarantee 100%. So building out this utility grid that relies on over more than half of energy that already currently exists for energy providers to potentially increase electric success by 0.6% really seems like an illogical solution, looking for an extremely rare problem. And that's, that's really kind of how I look at this. Businesses and institutions that need that 100% reliability already have generators in place, and that's a very, very small percentage of the time that they're out. Companies that do not currently have this are able to purchase it if they so desire. But even if the microgrid does come in, and they are able to produce 99.9% success, you still have to have backup generators for that 0.1%. So it's not gonna eliminate the need for backup power. Additionally, despite this, this is a so-called public-private partnership, where private dollars will be the ones that are used to invest in this. Somebody made the comment, this would not cost the city of Brooklyn directly. It would not. However, the county at a minimum will be adding administration to the county. So you're gonna have to pay administrator. You're gonna have to pay staffing to support that administrator in that office. And it's not just Brooklyn residents, but the entire county that would go to pay for that. So while the city itself directly would not be affected, it's the same pool, right? People in Brooklyn would have to pay for this as well. And so while the claim is that the infrastructure we build out by a private investment, taxpayers will incur some of the costs of this new company. Another issue I had and I raised with Mr. Foley was this is not fair competition. If there were a want for the current energy providers to build microgrids, they currently cannot do that. They, it is not allowed under current law. They would have to seek an exemption from the Public Utilities Commission in order to do that. And so because the county is a government organization, they need no such exemption. They can do it as they are doing it now. Now, it was stated that, well, if CEI really wanted to do this, they could. That may be the case, but as it stands right now, it's against the law for them to do that. So they would have to go through the extra step of getting that exemption from it. So in my opinion, this is the opposite of a free market competition. This is the government taking advantage of the situation. Next, the county does not have a single customer lined up to start purchasing their power. There's been a lot of interest, expressed interest. I mean, if you called up someone and said, hey, would you like your, you know, your power to increase from 99.3% to 99.9%? No one's gonna say no. They're gonna say yes. However, expressing interest in signing on with this new grid are two different animals. And again, to my knowledge, there's not a single company that's agreed to sign on. It's kind of the build it and they will come approach, and it does not make sense to me. And then lastly, at the end of the meeting, Mr. Foley stated this new microgrid is in line with the new ESG standards that are being laid out across the world. And I'm guessing that many people do not know what ESG scoring is. I would encourage you to do research for yourself. ESG stands for environmental, social, and governance. It's already established in countries like China, and it's quickly spreading throughout Europe and even in parts of America. And what this scoring does, it's basically scored upon your company's adherence to environmental and social standards. That's created by a global initiative. The name of the company is the Global Reporting Initiative. In my opinion, this is a very anti-American, anti-capitalistic worldview approach to business and how it is conducted. It does not take into account the way of American life, but rather a global initiative. As I told Mr. Foley at this meeting, ESG scoring is very dangerous, in my opinion, to our country, to our state, and to our city. And even though this may be a very, very small part of that, I will not support this ESG scoring in any way for the city of Brooklyn. So for those well-thought-out and well-researched reasons, I will not vote to be a partner in this venture. It would encourage my fellow colleagues to join me in voting no on this ordinance as well. That is all I have for this evening. As I mentioned at the beginning of my comments, or excuse me, the beginning of the meeting, to wish Happy Easter to all residents, and I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Council President Banker. Council, as I mentioned before, we have on here two resolutions. One to support the Greenway Vision Plan, as well as the Greater Cleveland Trails and Bike Ways Wayfinding Sign System Plan. Both of these materials I sent out to you, I would encourage residents to go check out the Greenway Plan on the Kuyt County Commission's website. It's been out for a couple of years now. We are not bypassing a resolution in support of this. We're not 100% saying we will follow every single thing in this plan, because if you, if you scroll down, there's things missing. It's not, it's not gonna be perfect. What we're saying is that we'd like to try to eventually get to the connections through metro parks, through the greenways. And if you look, Brooklyn is a critical gap, and it's because we're a built-out city that didn't plan for any kind of connection when we were planning. And so now we have to go back and take a look. And as we're, as we're looking at projects, to take a look at that, that is what we're committed to. Also, people have talked about April being a popular month for acknowledgements. I do have another acknowledgement. April's also Volunteer Appreciation Month. So I want to do a shout out to all those volunteers that helped make Brooklyn work, specifically in our senior center. We have many volunteers that help there, and our front desk, Louise McCormick, Carol Croxford, Marilyn Stausky, and Betty Kadapka, who just retired from serving as a volunteer in our senior center for 25 years. She's 96 years old, and she has been volunteering there for 25 years. So thank you so much for all you do, as well as all the meal delivery drivers, David Tim, Angie and Cynthia Sotola, Mitzi Domino, and Rose Alma, and Bob, and Marie Ford. Every, one of these volunteers come, you know, like they're getting paid for the job. They show up every day without fail. They do a fantastic job. They never complain. So we're truly blessed to have them volunteering for us. And then as well as our recreation center, to all the parents who volunteered to coach the different sports that we have, we're thankful. I know as a volunteer coach myself, it's a lot of work, and we appreciate their commitment to their kids and to the kids in this community, as well as to those Brooklyn coaches who come out and help coach clinics for our children, and come out to help our parent coaches learn different techniques to help aid the students get better. Lastly, I want to say Happy Easter, everyone, and do a shout out to the Recreation Center for their Easter egg hunt this past Saturday. They did a terrific job. It's so nice seeing programs come back. And a shout to the library. You also did a story walk to add to it this year. And then speaking of volunteers, I'd like to thank our volunteer Easter bunny, Andy. And so I wish everyone a Happy Easter, and thank you. And that concludes my report.
Yes, thank you. I did feel to mention that as well, that Easter egg hunt, despite the very nasty weather that was there on Saturday, my son thoroughly enjoyed it, and so he got way too much candy and had pretty much all of it gone by that night. So kudos to the rec department for hosting that, and thank you, Mr. Selhards, as well for being the Easter bunny. All right, we'll now move on with directors' reports. Well, we just have one this evening, and that is our Economic Development Director, Mr. Rowland.
Thank you. I just would like to provide counsel with a brief update on the zoning code update and talk a little bit about the schedule going forward. So since we had the last council work session in February, the team's been busy finalizing the draft zoning districts, as well as the uses and standards for each of those districts. We separated the proposed public districts into one district for public facilities and one district for parks and open space, as we discussed. We've updated the proposed zoning map based on the work session discussion, while maintaining the parcel zone for single-family detached housing on Manoa and Ridge in the single-family detached zoning district. We've, we're looking to schedule the next council work session for April 27th or 28th at 7:00 p.m. So we're trying to finalize those dates. We'll be, at that session, reviewing the revisions based on the February meeting. We'll be discussing the dimensional, which are setbacks in, in design standards, and also the draft of the parking and landscaping standards. Looking ahead beyond the meeting at the end of April, we'll have another council work session to discuss lighting and signage standards, either in late May or session to discuss lighting and signage standards, either in late May or early June. There'll be a public open house following that meeting in June. We'll, we'll have another council work session to discuss the administration and general provisions of the code, which will be either in late July or early August. That will be followed up again by a public open house in late August. After that, public open house will review the zoning code draft with council and planning commission from mid-September through the end of the year, with the idea of putting items that require the referendum approval will be filed with the Board of Elections by February 1st, 2023, and they'll be included on the May 2023 primary election ballot. So that's a quick overview of, of the next few meetings and where we go through the rest of the year. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Rowan. For legislation this evening, the first item is a notification that the, we received a $29,403 grant from the Cahu County Healthy Urban Tree Canopy Program. As was mentioned, this will go to plant new trees in Brooklyn, as well as to prepare an inventory management plan. On second reading this evening is Resolution 2022-10, agreeing to allow the Cahu County to operate a public utility in the city of Brooklyn pursuant to its powers under the state of Ohio and the laws established by the government of Cahu County. Up for a third reading and adoption is Ordinance 2022-7, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the West Creek Conservancy for the sale or purchase of vacant city of Brooklyn land property on Road on Road, Parcel 432-21-038, for $1 and other good and valuable consideration. Any additional comments or questions?
Move to adopt?
Sir.
To adopt, Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Up for a third reading and adoption is adopting Section 133.03, moral claims of the codified ordinances to provide for the resolution of moral claims. Additional comments or questions?
Move to adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
On second reading, ordinance 2022-9, establishing the One Ohio Opioid Livigation Settlement Fund within the city of Brooklyn. The next five resolutions and ordinances are on first reading. Resolution 2022-13, adopting the Cahu Greenways Vision Plan, providing for the periodic review thereof and providing for the integration of the plan with the physical development of the community. Resolution 2022-14, adopting the Greater Cleveland Trails and Bike Ways Wayfinding Sign System, providing for the periodic updates and enhancement thereof, and providing for the integration and use of these sign standards as appropriate through the community. Resolution 2022-15, authorizing the mayor of the city of Brooklyn to enter into a contract with the city of Cleveland for the use of the Ridge Road Transfer Station for the disposal of solid waste. Resolution 2022-16, authorizing a community cashier agreement by, between the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District and the city of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2022-11, reaffirming the prohibition of the possession, discharge, ignition, or explosion of fireworks in the city of Brooklyn set forth in Chapter 1519 of the Brooklyn Codified Ordances, notwithstanding the provisions of House Bill 172 as signed in the law. And I'll make a motion that this ordinance be referred to the Public Safety and Environmental Committee.
Second.
To refer to committee, Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
The next two ordinances are on first reading, but to hope to pass by suspension of the rules. Ordinance 2022-12, the ordinance to approve the 2022 replacement pages to the Brooklyn Codified Ordances and declaring an emergency. Any comments or questions?
Do you dispute or suspend the rules?
Sir.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
And then lastly is ordinance 2022-13, this is authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2022. And again, this is to bump up the purchase of a new salt truck from next year to this year to account for the increased time it takes to get it, and that is for an amount of $185,000.
Introduce by all to suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
To adopt, Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
The next day or so, Mrs. Ryan Shaki will be reaching out to the rest of the Public Safety and Environmental Committee to set that meeting in order to discuss Ordinance 2022-11. Of course, the community will be notified when that meeting will take place.
May I be recognized? Since this is just such an important one, can we make sure that the council people who do want to attend are also available?
Oh, yeah, of course, council will notify as well.
Thank you. I mean, to make sure everyone can make it.
Oh, yeah. Any other comments or questions from anyone on the council, mayor, or the administration?
Yes, I have a comment.
Okay. Yes, sir.
On what Mr. Ron Van Kirk said about the emergency pumps in residential basements, that's not what I said or what I meant. What I meant, the devastation for a resident to have that going on, to me, is the same devastation when you have to send employees home, you can't run your machines, keep these businesses rolling. These are the same companies that pay our taxes and provide services that we're trying to help. Keeping those companies lit at all times, no matter when this power goes down, is very detrimental to a lot of these companies, especially when they are paying our taxes in this city, versus another city that is also paying taxes and their power could be out, versus their employees now going home. As far as what I said about the emergency pumps, I would hope, as the future goes on, as these microgrids would get bigger, that it would lead into the residential areas and help the residents out just as much as it would help the companies. These grids are not going to, how would you say, hurt in any way, but help the businesses. And that's all I'm looking at. I'm not looking at spending tax dollars and wasting it, but if it could be put to good use, that would help tremendously. When you have to send employees home, and I would imagine they pay them, that's a tax, not a tax, but that is a loss to a company, especially if they're in production or manufacturing, whatever it may be. It's just, it's not right. And I've seen companies out with power, and it's just devastating to them because they are losing money. They have to maintain their building. Nick, that's all I have to say.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn, Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?